I'd like to welcome you to the, uh, town upon a select board meeting. December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three at six oh one P M. Uh, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Uh, board member roll call.
Angie Rawling.
Brian Harris.
Jamie Percy.
Mike Gardner. Everyone please rise for the. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Perfect, thank you. Uh, approval of the agenda, public comment, approval of minutes, excuse me, warrants. Correspondence, excess weight permits, updates from town officials, errors and omissions with Nemrick contracted. Assessor and assessor clerk. Powell Conservation Commission mission statement discussion, personnel policy, holiday pay discussion continued. Social service ballot article appropriation requirement policy discussion. Budget initial discussion, ballot article initial discussion, public comment, executive personnel, and adjourned.
So moved.
Second.
For motion or second, any more discussion? All those in favor? Perfect. Uh, Andrew, we have any public comment? No public comment? Perfect, approval of minutes on November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, select board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, corrections, questions, all those in favor? Minutes on November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, public.
So moved.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor? Uh, warrants, count's payable, December eighth, forty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty-seven cents. Any questions? All those in favor? Count's payable, December fifteenth, thirty-one thousand, three hundred and ten dollars and eighty cents.
Second.
Any questions, comments, all those in favor? Payroll, December eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, eleven thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seventy cents.
So moved.
Any questions? Comments, all those in favor? Payroll, December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, ten thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ten cents.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor? Uh, any correspondence there?
Not today.
Any excess week permits? Updates from town officials?
I have one from Darcy. Um, so this is from Darcy at our wastewater treatment facility. So, and it's a pretty good report again, so bear with me if I mispronounce words. Um, I've begun working on the F Y twenty-five budget. There have been some interest in sewer decommissions and new connections for the spring season. Joel informing that the town had secured a new diesel fuel supplier. The new representative came to the wastewater treatment facility for an onsite visit in order to record the location of our generators, main and pod. The new SCADA computer system has been installed and is up and running. The new alarm system software is much more sophisticated, improving redundancy within the system. The backup system is in place and there have been no issues to date. We have been working on completing state approved wastewater correspondence courses, which are required for license renewals. The latest course, which was free, provided some very helpful data regarding weather, resiliency, and some critical contact information for Green Mountain Power. We have continued to monitor the new water system being installed at Powell Estates Mobile Home Park to ensure the wastewater system is not affected. A potential water leak due to previous digging located near P V one access gate had created a very large area of ponding. And was directly affecting our access to the pump station. The health op- health officer gathered the appropriate information from Joel and myself and contacted the park owners in order to correct the problem. And I will say Sam was, um, really great at working with the park owners, reaching out to us and, um, you know, it was kind of her first. Experience that I've seen her on and she did a great job facilitating that communication. We had to relocate one of the homes cleanouts in Powell Estate Mobile Home Park, tie drawings have been updated. We had to revisit pump station P C three and resurface onsite the existing suction valve and pump number one. Both pump check valves were cleaned as well. We have been able to save money on electricity at the pump stations this year by taking advantage of the warmer weather. And setting the station heaters to maintain lower temperatures. All scheduled maintenance activities are being performed and the work orders are up to date.
Very nice.
Good report. Thank you, Darcy.
And that's all I have for updates from town officials.
Okay, um. I'm deep from the zoning administrator, um. We have started the process, um. For a fine on somebody who's in violation. And I'm not, we went to the, brought it to the sheriff's department, we. Worked on the proper paperwork, the proper procedure, wrote a ticket through the judicial bureau. Through, through our policy now. Um, I handed the ticket off to, uh, the shit, Manikin County Sheriff's Department. And I am not positive, I have not heard whether the ticket has been served at this time or not. I know that that was, um. I, I know they were gonna, you know, they were gonna, um, make the phone call and deliver the ticket. So that was last. I think it was last Friday, when we wrote the ticket on Wednesday, I believe, last week. And the sheriff. They were down with some guys because of, um, some health issues, some sickness going around. And I did make contact with, uh, one of them on Friday. So that's been delivered. Where it's at, I don't really know, but it's kind of out of our hands now. That's it from the zoning, other than. I don't even have any new permits going out, really a couple mining stuff, nothing major. Okay. Um, errors and omissions with Nemrick contracted assessor and assessor clerk.
And they are both on Zoom, I believe.
Um, basically that, that document needs to be approved by the select board, it's just a couple errors that happened through. The, the fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Um, one of them's a property that had a homestead declaration with some business use. Um, the business use was put on the property, but it was put into the wrong field on the camma software. Um, corrected the error and sent out new tax bill. Um, I don't remember what the other one was, but, um, there was no value change on that second one. The, the first one I spoke of was only a two hundred dollar value change. And it's something that hap- has to be approved every year, uh, before December thirty-first.
And these are, just so everyone's clear, Jacob, these are, these are, um, just mistakes basically that are made. Throughout the year, um. On, on their assessments and that kind of stuff, correct?
Yeah, they could be mistakes, um, sometimes things come through like the homestead declaration late, um, after the April first la- deadline. Um, and, and homesteads roll through throughout the year, all the way up until, I think even. Uh, last week, we still got one homestead, so things changed just through homestead declarations. I don't remember what that first one was exactly, but again, I think it might even just have been like a name change on the grand list. That, that paperwork you have in your hand should say what that first one was.
Yep, yep, yeah, it does, and that's fine, I just, I just want people to all understand and be clear of what the errors and omissions. Um, what it actually is, I don't think we need to go into details of what these are. Um, you know, like you said, one is a two hundred dollar difference and the other is a, a zero dollar difference. So it's not a huge issue, because, um. But I just, I just want our, our residents and taxpayers to totally understand what that is in case they didn't.
Definitely.
I appreciate that, thank you. Anybody have any questions for Jacob or Wendy on the errors and omissions?
Oh, seems pretty clear.
Pretty clear to me, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept Nemrick, uh, changes.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, Jacob, thank you, Wendy.
Thank you.
Um, Conservation Commission mission statement discussion. Do you have a copy of the, do we want to go down, how, how do we want to do this, guys? Ladies.
You can call me guy, I don't care.
I know, I'm trying to be politically correct here. I don't do all that sometimes, and I'm trying. Do we want to get on through each one of the, um. On the, on the Vermont statutes and discuss each one? Or? How would you guys like to do that?
So out of the statute, I picked a few things that I would like to see involved in our mission statement.
So you want to get on through each one, then?
It's totally up to you.
Let's do it that way, let's get on through each one and, um, discuss each one, you with your, though with your notes, how's that, is that right, Tara? Okay.
That's a little makes it easier for me because then I can just.
Right, then you can just make your notes on your, you have a copy right there, right? Okay, just, of course you do, you made me a copy. Um, so I'm not going to get into the. Twenty-four V S A and all that stuff, powers and duties. Any conservation commission now, before we even get started on this, we don't have to follow every single one of these. Statutes that are on here, okay, we can, we can pick and choose and, and my opinion is to go. Usually I'm a beggar go home. Um, but my opinion on this is to, is to start out a little bit slow. In this formation, because we can always add easier than we can subtract duties and powers. That's, that's my opinion.
I guess make one statement for you.
Absolutely.
Because just to follow off on what you just stated, it's probably don't have to follow. Because in state statutes, anybody that follow, actually reads these and whatnot, they know there's the word shall and may. And under this particular one, that says any conservation commission created under this chapter. May follow the following procedures. So therefore the municipality can choose, so there's clarity out there in case there's people that are in question.
Anybody else having comments before we start? Okay, so any conservation commission created under this chapter may, hear your point, Jamie. Um, one, make an inventory and conduct continuing studies of the natural resources of the municipality, including. Air, surface, and groundwater, and pollution, their, uh, soils and their capabilities, mineral and other re- uh, earth resources. Streams, lakes, ponds, wetlands, and floodplains, unique or full, uh, fragile biologic sites. Scenic and re- recreational resources, plant and animal life, especially the rare and endangered species. Prime agricultural and foresting and other open lands. Now mine. I, I like the way it starts out. My feeling is. That I'd like to see D in there at this time.
You want to keep D?
Yes, okay, yes.
I just want to make sure I understood.
Okay, sorry, Ryan, thank you for.
I'm in agreement with that.
What did Bob want out of those ones for his opinion?
Yeah, where it says, I didn't see his.
Yeah, I'll read his, um.
Highlighted, I know it's hard.
Yeah, I can tell, it's, it looks like D on Bob's as well, streams, lakes, ponds, wetlands, floodplains.
And then F, I think, right?
Yep.
Um. Looks like H is highlighted.
Oh, okay.
Right, is that, are you doing that?
Yep, H, D and H.
Okay.
Those were, he wants D and H or did he say E?
D and H is what Bob's looking for. Um.
I know.
What's that, Jamie?
I wanted F in there, scenic and recreational resources.
I like the F because if we're going to be building trail systems, we need to know where the scenic and recreation. Where the best locations for things and, and things like that.
Yeah, I'm okay, I would like to see it, uh, some kind of caveat with that, that it's working in conjunction with Parks and Rec though. Make sure, I would just like it, like stated in there that, you know, working with.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree with that.
Everybody else in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Right, I'll go with that, but how do we, I think we should add that. I, I, I like Brian's point where, um, the, the Parks and Rec works, so scenic and recreational resources. Somewhere we need to put in there that, um, working in conjunction with Parks and Rec.
Yes.
Yeah, because I just don't want to see potentially in the future, two, two different commissions butting heads.
Exactly.
Because they get into, pardon my French, a pissing match over who's in charge of it.
Right. Rather have people work together, definitely.
Yeah, I mean, right now it wouldn't be an issue though.
Yeah, I think, I look at it more as like the conservation commission is like the planner. That says, oh, it would work really good here, and then maybe Parks and Rec is like, does the implementation of it, it helps with the building the trails and that stuff.
I was thinking more like, you know, if Parks and Rec's like, hey, we would like to put a small boat launch here. And the, the, you know, conservation commission's like, no.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I see your point.
Is that it under one, I think we're good, right?
So, one, just to make sure I know, one, D, F, and H.
Yeah, and F has, we have to put the addendum in. Some, some wording in there along there.
As far as with the library and all that kind of stuff.
Yep.
I just think it's.
I just think it's, I think we start out.
Yeah.
Like I said, I'm a beggar go home guy, but I think this way here, we're, you know.
Start small, keep it fairly simple and.
And see how things go, and then, and then we certainly can add.
Add or subtract, doesn't either.
Yeah, subtraction's a much more difficult process, I think, than addition. Uh, two, make and maintain an inventory of lands within the municipality which have historical, educational, cultural. Scientific, architectural, archeology, archaeological values in which the public has an interest. What's the board's plug on that one?
I'd say keep it there.
Yes, I see, I have that on my list.
It may not be an initial, an initial goal, but at least it's there for them to. If somebody brings it to their attention, they can focus on something.
And just for your, uh, for everyone's information, Bob, uh, agrees with that one too. So we're going to keep two, Tara?
Yeah.
Three, recommend to the legislative body of the municipality to purchase or the receipt of gifts of land or rights thereto. Or other property for the purposes of this chapter.
Well, it could mean access and whatnot.
I think that would mean like if somebody is, like, say they pass and they bequeath a piece of property. It would have to come, I would think would have to come through the conservation commission at that point.
Right. Or like if, say you run, allow access, a, a foot trail across your property to a piece of town property.
Or how about when we were approached by the, I can't remember exactly who it was, but the. The piece of land over here on Sun Our Street.
Yeah. Any, any viable.
I, I guess I don't have a problem recommending, if they recommend to the legislative body.
Just because they recommend doesn't mean we have to.
Exactly, I just don't want to, I just want to make sure we don't have any obligation. You know, that we would have to purchase or, or acquire, or whatever, just because. Which is, I guess, we don't anyways.
Nope, no, just recommendation.
So you're speaking of three? Receive appropriations for operating expenses, including clerical help by appropriation through the budget of the legislative body.
I was okay with skipping that.
With what, skipping it?
Yeah.
Me too.
Because I was gonna do, um, the one where you receive money and gift.
Well, that's kind of different.
That's something, yeah, totally different.
Totally different. Um.
Yeah, I think number four would be if they get so busy, they end up needing to hire somebody for like taking minutes, helping with the office paperwork side of it. And I would think if we get to that point, that's going to be a larger role as opposed to just one sub-commission.
Right.
I agree, so I think we can strike four for now.
I think that's the same.
Everybody in agreement with that, dreaming, Jamie?
Yeah.
And, uh, let me just check. And I, Bob, Bob apologized, he couldn't be here tonight, he had a family commitment. So therefore he sent this, and I'm just making sure that his voice is heard here. And he did.
I think at this point, number five is the same as number four for.
So five is receive money, grants, or private gifts from any source for the purposes of this chap- chapter. Grants and gifts received by the trustee of public funds shall be carried in a conservation fund from year to year. Be extended only for purposes of this chapter. I. I don't, I, I don't like that, the way that's worded, to be honest with you.
Yeah, same here.
I, I, I have a problem with the, I guess I have, grants, I don't have a problem with grants. To a certain degree, because we can say, okay, you have to apply for a grant, or the legislative body can, or whatever, right, we accept or we don't.
Yeah.
I have a problem with the private gifts. Um, from any source. Um, for the purposes of this chapter, um. I just, the private part worries me.
I know we take, we accept donations for specific projects. So I, then I guess that would be, like if, say at the point where we're going to make a. The trail system with the platforms, if people want to donate towards the platform or something like that, that's a specific. But this here, I think right now, we're getting the car before the horse.
I agree, so we want to strike five for now?
I would say yes.
Because, because honestly, Brian, um, back to your Parks and Rec. If we're applying for grants. Our Parks and Rec is already able to do that and already knows that.
They already have budget items and.
So we're going to strike, we're going to strike five?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay with that.
We're going to be working cohes- cohesively.
Right, there's no need to create multiple different budget line items.
Right.
That just makes a bigger economy nightmare later.
And like I said, we can, we always can add and we can change and whatever else, and Bob doesn't have that one either, so. Um, receive gifts of land or other property for the purposes of this chapter by consent of the legislative body or by the affirmative vote of the municipality.
I don't like the way that's worded, because it makes it seem like if they receive a gift of land that belongs to the commission and not to the town. Like they're the sole proprietors of that piece of property.
Good point.
I mean, I'm, that may not be, I'm sure that's not the intention of it, but to me, that's, that, when I read that, that was my first thought. Because I'm like, oh, so, you know, I gift a piece of land to the conservation commission. They're the only ones that have say over it, like the legislative body can't say, hey, let's incorporate that with this trail network.
Well, it does say by consent of the legislative body or affirmative.
But it also says, it also says for the purposes of this chapter, not for the benefit of the town.
Correct.
Right?
Yep.
I think that one needs to be rewritten if we're going to approve that one, so. Or, or do we just?
I, and I would, I'd say get rid of that, because I'd say any piece of property that the town is absorbing for whatever reason, comes before the legislative body, period.
Yeah, and we choose to.
They can bring a recommendation, and I would leave it at that.
Yep.
Okay.
Then we can bring it to the voters when, if when needed.
Right. Um, seven, administer the lands, properties, and other rights which have been acquired by the municipality for the purposes of this chapter.
Think Bob would want that one?
Um, yep, I'm wanting that one.
And that, I feel like that is something they would be doing.
Yeah.
I feel like that's kind of the purpose of the conservation commission, right?
Yep.
Kind of what you're looking for on the new one, right? Okay, everybody in agreement with that one?
Keep seven?
Yep. Assist the local planning commissioner zoning board of adjustment or the district environmental commission by providing advisory, environmental evaluations. Where pertinent applications made to those bodies for permits for development. I think that's just, to me, that's just another.
That's a duplicate.
Duplicate, where we already have the planning commission, we have the D R B, we have the B C R C.
Um, and that's not to say that the planning commission might not reach out to them if they had a specific question. But I don't think it necessarily has to be listed in there.
Perfect, strike eight then, everyone's good?
Yep.
Get off the quiet, Ange. I'm a little nervous.
No, I gotta, I have all my stuff. I have a list. A king prepared.
Um, nine, cooperate with the local legislative body, planning, commission, zoning board, adjustment, road committee, or other municipal or private organizations. On matters affecting the local environment or the natural resources of the municipality.
That'd be a yes.
I think that should just be happening, period anyways.
It's a given. Uh, that it says cooperate with, that's a, that's the wording of this one is weird too.
That's why I'm reading the wording, because I'm, it confuses me to take care.
Uh, I don't like it.
Well, untaken cooperate, there being an active resource if needed.
And working with.
Right.
Guess they can be jolting right if they need to.
Well, well, the part of that I cooperate with and then you'll municipal or private organizations. So.
Maybe the private part.
Would be the person that owns the land that wants to.
On matters.
That's how I kind of took it, I mean, um.
Well. Would a, would a private organization be a company that we may be hiring, like? When, what we do with the P F O A testing?
Yeah.
But, I, I, that's how I'm looking at that, but.
Well, I'm looking at it as a, and that's, so I, I look at it as, um. I look at it as a, um. Company that's, um. Or individual that's trying to come in and do some sort of a. Business or something along those lines, so.
Yeah, it's two sides.
Yeah, I was going a different way with it, I was thinking cooperate with a private organization, I'm thinking in my mind something like. A group that's anti-hunting, who wants to have all pri- all hunting barred from all public lands.
Yeah.
The way that's written, cooperate with me, I would take that as like they're, they have to cooperate with that group. It's a good point.
That's a good value, so.
Maybe not, and that, that's just how I, at the first thought, that's how I'm taking it.
I, I almost think we can strike nine, because honestly, um. At this point, is basically what we're trying to do right now is to have them.
Administer the land.
Administer our land that we just purchased. And we can always add something like that one afterwards.
Because if any private group wants to come in and, or if any changes, they should be coming before the legislative board. And then we could direct the conservation commission or Parks and Rec or whichever group to work with said group.
And.
Or just admit the word private for this time being.
Yep, Bob, Bob is not, Bob doesn't like nine either, so.
Yep.
We're in agreement about nine, we're going to strike that one? Prepare, collect, publish, advertise, and distribute relevant books, mats, and other documents, and maintain communication with similar organizations. And encourage through educational activities the public understanding of local natural resources and conservation needs.
I'm okay with that in principle, but what, my question would be, what resources are they collecting and publishing? And would we require them to get prior approval? And would we require them to get prior approval? Before they publish something? And under what budget item? Like where would they get the financing for that? Like I'm okay with like, I'm okay with information going out like that kind of stuff, but I would like to see at least, at least a review from the administrative side.
Before something.
You could say like with prior.
I was gonna say with prior.
Authorization from the select board.
So you have two matches up, I always have now. National Forest Ranger Station. Or whatever area.
Well, yeah, but this is different. This is gonna have all your local stuff on here and then, and
Right.
And then the way I look at this, it's gonna be um if, if I were on the conservation commission and I look at that number ten, that's part of our mission.
Right.
Is we're gonna do our local natural resources like, like the weeping rocks, for instance, just off the top of my head, right?
Right, trail system.
Either your trail systems or whatever that are, that are local here, so.
Yep.
I I think, I think that's fine as long as we
Add with prior.
Prior approval from the legislative body.
Yep.
Okay. Make a brief annual report to the municipality of its finances and transactions for the year just passed and its plans and prospects for the ensuing year. Um, added nineteen seventy-seven, number two fifteen, all of all.
I don't think that's necessary if you're not giving them a budget.
Right.
And money.
I think that's.
Um, I could, I mean, we can ask them for a report to go in the town report like we do every other board.
Right.
But it doesn't have to be specifically a financial report.
Exactly. I I think it was, I think, I think a report to go into town report is a great idea. Uh, you know, but I don't think we need a report of their finances and transactions because we're not giving them the money. And let's see, sorry, I didn't even check with Bob on the last, Bob's on his last two and he's good with not having more.
Yeah, uh, I would just like to add something to eleven, maybe that we could maybe some kind of wording that as far as an annual report or reports as requested by select board. Like if we would like an update for them, if we haven't heard anything, like, hey, what are you guys up to?
Which word?
Give us an update, please.
So should we reword that totally and just say because I don't think the finances and transactions should be in there, but just make a brief annual report to the municipality.
Well, I was thinking like how we, we've started asking department heads to start giving us like more than just a once a year update, like start giving us like monthly or quarterly updates.
So I'll say, I'll say make a brief annual report to the municipality or whenever requested, I'll find better language than that.
Yeah, that's fine. Like I'm not looking to put them, put it on a set time schedule, but you know, if they're really busy, I would like more updates than less.
Yep.
If they're not doing anything, if nothing's going on and it's idle, then obviously if you have nothing to report, you have nothing to report.
They may have a project or something they want to work on and focus on.
This sloped floor over here is driving me nuts. The wa- the sloped floor, every time I pick my feet up, the chair starts rolling, so now I've just turned this.
Fine goes backwards. So I'm gonna say make a brief report to the municipality on an annual basis or whenever requested.
I think we're good on our, on the mission statement now, we can write that.
Yep.
Right? And then bring it back for approval and then we can send our um.
So I think what we did was you were gonna approve it today because we basically know what's on it now.
Okay.
So we'll approve it today so that I can publicize it and then we're gonna set the deadline two days for people to submit their letters of interest two days before the next meeting. So the next meeting's the twenty-eighth, which makes the cutoff like the twenty-sixth.
Okay. Does that work?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm thinking that. Everyone's happy with the mission statement that we just came up with?
Yeah, I'm happy with it. We know what we want to put into it and I'm fine with approving it.
Okay.
That was the, Angie, that was the schedule we laid out in that meeting before.
I was just trying to remind myself of the date, sorry.
December, 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 not January.
Um, so do we need a motion to approve this mission statement? Or are we good with, well, we probably should.
Uh, I'd say we just make the motion.
Just be.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, we approve uh the mission statement for the conservation commission as we've stated and reviewed.
Second, an open session on December fourteenth.
Yes, with, as noted by Mike.
Perfect.
Seconded.
Any more discussion? And you're totally, it was pretty clear what we were, it was pretty easy really, right? Good. Trying to make it easy.
She's happy we made a decision and didn't table it.
That's right, me too. Uh, if there's no more discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we need to do a separate motion to authorize Tara to post it?
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
It's already been posted, but we just wanted to get a deadline and then the specific duties and responsibilities and.
Okay. Okay, moving right on. Personnel policy holiday pay discussion continuing.
Um, so at the last meeting, I brought the holiday discussion for our part-time employees and we talked about the difference between, you know, some are on call, some are not, and we really only have four part-time employees. Um, two, one at the waste water treatment facility, two at the transfer station and then one here. Um, so in looking at it, it doesn't make sense to say only the ones that get called in get a holiday pay. It's just not fair. And Angie had a great suggestion of maybe we try just four hours for all part-time on a holiday and eight hours for all full-time, even if you don't normally work that day to make it most fair. So I reached out to the LCT and I asked them about the language and they said they suggest using that, that it makes it more uniform and more fair. And to, that we might want to put in something about proportion of full-time, so like say, you know, Jeff works twenty hours and Tom works thirty, but we don't really have that much of a difference.
Okay.
As far as hours, you know, most of our part-time people are between twenty and thirty.
Yeah, four to thirty, really.
Yeah, so it, it seems fair to me to put, just like I said, the language of all part-time employees will receive four hours holiday pay, all full-time receive eight hours, whether they normally work that day or not.
And are we gonna do all the holidays? Or we may just do some major?
Be the same holidays?
We'd say all the holidays that are listed in the personnel policy already.
Otherwise, that would be too confusing kinda.
Yeah, and I know, Tom, I mean, I'm sure, really, I think Tom and Ron are really gonna be appreciative of it also because I think they've gotten like one holiday since I've been here because it happened to fall on that day, so.
And they do work all year long.
Yeah.
And they, you know, work for the town and even though it's part-time.
And now, I wish I'd come up with this idea earlier, but I came up with it tonight when I was working outside my house. The only, the only thing that I thought about Tara was, was for some of our other um so part-time employees. Um, we could, we could also put in their job description that they don't qualify, I think. So.
Don't qualify ever?
For, for holiday, and I'm not talking about Tom and Ron and and Jeff and the ones we're, we're discussing now.
Like per diem part-time?
Per diem part-time, exactly.
Oh, like lemon.
Hmm.
Yes, we would, we will have to put language in there that says per diem it doesn't apply to.
Right.
Uh, or temporary, temporary and per diem it does not apply to for it.
Right, I think we can, I think we can change those job descriptions. Just put an addendum in there and, and having them sign that addendum so that we don't run into, I know that was in our discussion last time. We were worried about that, that part.
It could just be an amendment right on our, on, under the holiday piece in our policy.
Yeah, and then all they send it.
Well, I also think Jamie that definitely put it there, but I think if you put it on that job description, then we don't get into that.
Make sure it's stated in all job descriptions.
Then it's clear. Nope, that's fine too.
Crystal clear, right?
It covers us from somebody trying to get creative.
And take us to court again?
Um, so I did say it doesn't apply to per diem and temp with that said.
Right.
Um, Paul works all summer long and is often paid for holidays because, but he's a temp. So that's sort of to you guys to decide, should that continue or not?
He is paid for holidays?
He has been paid for holidays, yes. Cause that's sort of on that department head and um, yeah. But if I put it in the personnel policy that temp can't be paid, then he will no longer be paid for that. So maybe I just say.
I didn't realize it was a temp.
Diem?
Yeah.
Well, he does work forty hours a week all summer long though.
Right.
Guess he would be seasonal.
Right?
Yep.
Then we have plow, then we have, we have some plow people who are seasonal too, right?
Right.
So you gotta be careful with that one. I would go with the per diem. And I think the per diem thing is.
It doesn't apply to per diem.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I'll make those changes and then I'll bring it back, but if you wouldn't mind approving me paying them for the holidays that happened in November. If you're gonna allow me to go backwards, if not, we'll do it from here on out. I'm not sure how you wanna do that either.
What's the board's opinion?
I'm okay with going retroactive back to the Thanksgiving holiday, but no farther.
Well, I think they're looking.
Cause this was brought up before Thanksgiving.
And I think they're looking for Veterans Day.
It was Veterans Day where the discussion started.
Yeah, well, yeah, we did, uh.
Well, from November first.
Yeah, for November first, from when it was first brought up.
November first, two thousand twenty-three.
Yep. Need a motion?
Yes, please.
Make a motion to retroact as of November first or uh holiday power.
As stated.
As stated.
Second.
Any more discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
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 Social service ballot article appropriation requirement policy discussion.
Okay, so as you all know right now, once an agency collects their signatures of five percent of the voters, they don't have to do it again, they just do it the one time. And then what they send me is just a request, it's just a simple form that I send them. Says how much they are asking for this year, how much they asked for last year, and it asks for just a brief description of what they do with their funds. Um, and then at the same time, I ask them for a letter for the town report. Um, there's been a lot of questions over whether we should change that policy or not. Um, there's been, you know, the suggestion that we require the form nine ninety and I'm just kind of looking for board thoughts and opinions on the policy as it is and possible suggestions for next year. I will say many of them sent me the form nine nineties because I did ask for them this year. I told them they weren't required. So many people did send them, but some people don't have them. Some people don't file taxes at all, some don't have to file that form for whatever reason. Um, so that's just something to keep in mind.
We can review their uh statement, oh, I thought.
Like you can review the form nine ninety, it is public information, yes, but some and I don't know why, because I'm not great with the tax.
What I'm wondering.
What did you say?
I'm wondering how they can admit having to do that.
I, I don't know, I don't know all the laws.
There should be an LLC or.
Right, well, it's I, it's LIRA stuff and I don't understand it.
I I guess here's my, my gut feeling is because we're, we're under the wire this year for it.
Well, we can't, we can't do anything this year, it's our.
Oh, yeah, let's do it.
I think moving forward, my, my opinion is, um, my opinion is we make, um we.
Require nine.
Require that form.
I agree.
And I think we require them to get the appropriate signatures to be placed on the ballot.
Right.
Um, instead of that, just I, I know this has been, I know these ballot articles have been a discussion topic for quite a few years now.
Yeah.
And I think it's our due diligence to la- our, our taxpayers know that we're at least.
It's not an insignificant amount that's being asked.
It's, that's right, it's grown to, it's grown to, it was almost three hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, what is it like?
I just signed, I just signed it two weeks ago. I think it was, I think it was two hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars.
It's like eight percent of our budget.
Yeah, I think it was two, I think it was two hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars that I just signed.
Well, the potter, you chose.
Right.
Yeah.
So it is a significant amount of money at this point and I believe that, that we should as a responsible legislative body for this town, make sure that our taxpayer dollars are going. And I'm, and I'm not accusing anybody of not using the money for what they're saying for. I just think it's our duty to say, yes, we did this, we know where your money's going.
Right.
We do it everywhere else. We do it, we do it to Joel, we do it to Darcy, we do it to Tom.
Yep.
Right? We do it to, we do it to everybody else.
Right.
Leonard, all of them, except for our ballot articles and it is like eight percent or something like that of our, of our budget. So I think that, that moving forward for the next fiscal year that we require that, that form, I think we require them to get their and, and this is just, we'll have to write a new policy for this. We require them to get their signatures.
Yep.
Now, whatever my name is. Every year moving forward until the next legislative body changes it or whatever.
Yep.
Um, do we need anything else in there, Tara? Is there anything else?
Um, well, I need to know if they don't have a form nine ninety. So for example, um, poundle youth baseball. I don't know that they file like that.
We don't.
They might, but I don't think they do. So what happens in an incident like that when they don't have it?
We are not, we'll file it. We are, we have been pushing it. Uh, it's uh I'm not sure what's going on with it, our treasurer.
Seniors is another one. There's, they don't file taxes.
Okay.
Is there, is there an equivalent?
Um, I mean, I guess.
And I don't know.
We're happy to provide all our financial statements.
I know that.
Maybe like a really detailed budget statement or something.
Yeah, that probably would work.
And then we also need to decide what we're doing with the information, you know, is it all just gonna go sit in a folder? Are we going to analyze it, distribute it, are we just gonna, is it just gonna be board information? You know, what are we doing with the info?
We gotta find.
People are like pretty, pretty informative.
I think at that point, I, I think.
I think it's public in.
I think it's public information anyway.
Yeah.
That's all I can find.
So we, I think we just have a, have it filed here somewhere either, even if it's electronically.
So if taxpayers wanted to come view it, they could, we could have a link online, they could view it there.
That's right, if I want to commit, find out where the, and I'm gonna use you the probability.
That's fine, I'm in, I'm in full favor of this and I.
No, but I think that's.
Baseball too, so.
Right.
I'm still in full favor of this.
Right, and I just think that I, I just think it, it's I think as a board, we're doing our due diligence by saying, okay, we know where your money's going.
Yep.
Right? We know where your money's going and we can show you.
Yep, and I think.
Where your money's going.
See is better.
Yep.
We can show you where your tax dollars are going.
Exactly, two taxpayers out there that are that.
Really concerned, I did hear a lot of concerns of like, well, what if, you know, if it says we have so much in savings and people need to understand, for example, like the fire department, they may have some in savings because they're trying to, they have a building fund.
That or endowment.
So, you know, some people were concerned that it would be misinterpreted, the, the data that's on them, but I don't know that there's anything we can really do about that.
I don't think anybody, right, and I don't think anybody's trying to hide a single thing.
Right.
Okay, I think, I think they're just concerned about that.
They just don't want it to be misconstrued or to affect them so that they, you know what I mean, like it.
Well, I think that falls onto them, I think that falls onto the organization, whatever it may be. Um.
To come to town meeting.
To come to town meeting and explain.
To explain why they.
They have to put a little FaceTime to the residents.
That's right.
Yes.
And I, I, that's what I want to see.
And if they answer half the questions that we asked them when we met with them, certain ones.
Yep.
Well.
They should be easier said than done.
Right, that's easy. So. So, do you guidance?
It definitely does, so I'll just, I did draft up something, but I'll work on it and then I'll bring it back.
I would like to add that when we pass this, that we send a letter to all the existing ones that have that are getting letters to resubmit.
So they'll.
Let them know.
Ahead, yep. And I have.
That way that none of those groups can say, well, I didn't know.
Right, they'll have a warning.
Yep.
Year ahead. Okay.
Good idea, Brian.
Thank you.
It was a good idea.
Are you good with that?
Good with that.
Budget initial discussion.
So I just wanted to put this on the table to see if you guys had anything specific you wanted to see addressed in the budget. Any certain lines you wanted to see increased? I know you don't have it in front of you, but um, maybe like the sheriff's contract, if you wanna make sure that we get that line up there, things like that, just, just kind of an initial discussion to see if you guys had.
Well, I can, I can tell you that like our insurance, theirs has gone up. Your workman's comp insurance has gone up if you, you, you ask specifically about the sheriff's department. Um, so when people ask why their rate raised the way it did this year for the last budget. And you know, because you're handling it for us in the town, that it's a true statement that, because ours went up the same way.
Mm-hmm.
So, but specific numbers at this moment, I don't know. But if I find out, I'll make enough share.
It's something that would help us when it does, when we sit down and try to do the budget, we can, you know. If we know, if we know that somebody's insurance, and I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm just gonna say if somebody's insurance, you know, thirty-five percent, we know that, that, and we'll, let's use the sheriff's department, if we're gonna keep our thirty plus hours or whatever, that we know that that their hourly rate is gonna go up.
A percent.
A, a certain percentage because, you know, and honestly, if we could have that information, if we can have the information of, because, because I, every, every time we, we talk about the sheriff's department, for instance, in any of these budget items, when we talk about them, we're, we're winging it.
Right.
Right? We're winging what the sheriff's department's gonna go up to next year.
Right.
If we, if we had a ballpark, fairly accurate number from our outside vendors, so to speak.
Right.
Of what their budgets, what they're looking at going up next year, because let's face it, we're all doing the same thing. Right?
I mean.
Uh, we're all doing the same thing. They're doing the same thing we are. They have to have budget discussion somewhere along the line. Everybody has to have it. So if we can have that in front of us when we sit down, that would help us immensely because there, it takes a lot of the guesswork out of it. So we can say, okay, we're, we're contracting the sheriff's department now for thirty hours. Just, you know, whatever it is, right? Maybe next year we can contract them for thirty-five hours because they're only going up a certain amount.
Right.
Right? We can increase the, the amount of hours or whatever. If we had that information in front of us, instead of just guessing at it.
Mm-hmm.
I think guessing.
We kinda luck out with like the sheriff's department because of when their contract renewal list.
Right.
But like health insurance, we have no warning and it goes up January.
Yeah, instead of the first full year.
Marketing for the end of June or July one, so it gets really tricky to.
I think everybody's health insurance is going up anywhere from twenty-five to thirty percent. That's a good one.
Here it bumped us up.
Uh, yeah, I, I have the insurance increase right now.
Well, I think it's just like, I think it's, I just, I, if we could reach out, maybe if we could reach out to some of those organizations like the sheriff's department that we do business with, if we could just get a ballpark idea of what they're thinking. And I'm sure that James has a, has an idea, you know, what he's thinking for, you know, next year, because like you said, it is G R, you know, July one. But if he has an idea, it would help, it certainly would help us um be able to budget, you know, in our, in our discussion.
And I, so I'm, basically what's happening right now, just so you're aware, is I'm getting the worksheets back from department heads. And then I will sit with Ellen, we'll plug in numbers, and then hopefully the next meeting, I don't know if we'll be ready to have a special next week. Probably not. Probably just the twenty-eighth.
We're not doing a meeting next week.
Will be a lot of budget.
We're working Thursday.
I said before, like Tuesday. I was gonna do Tuesday, but I don't think I have enough time. So make it the twenty-eighth. Let's. Also, the meeting will be budget discussion.
Can we not have a meeting next week, please?
No meeting next week.
Oh, no, we're twenty-eight. Meeting Monday, not Tuesday.
Please.
The next regular meeting, we'll do more budget stuff.
Uh, I would just like to get people's input. I would, I wanna recommend that we do some kind of trail clearing, clearing budget. Uh, as specifically the Who's It Ben Trail that we have go along the river down by the sewage treatment facility. Right now Parks and Rec coordinates with, I, sorry, Jen, I forget the name of the group, but basically it's a group of youths that come down to help clear the trail once a year, but it's all volunteerism and the trail, trees fall, gets overgrown. And there's only three of us on Parks and Recs and it's hard. We all work full-time. So I was wondering if, if that's something we could try to put into the lawn mowing contract or to see if we could get whoever has that contract to at least knock it back with a weed eater, or if that's something we would have to do separately. I just want people's opinion.
Mm-hmm.
Parks and Rec has five grand in their budget line. Are you saying separate from their five grand?
Um, separate, or I'm just looking for a little guidance on how the select board would like to proceed on that. Because Parks and Rec usually has to go before the select board in order to like contract something to get approval.
Mm-hmm.
So before we do something like that, like what's the select board's opinion on that?
Mm-hmm.
Mowing contract, the mowing contract is up this year and we're gonna be in the next couple of months putting that out to bid. And I'm really trying to trim it down because that is, that's a really high.
Well, the cemeteries eat that a lot of that.
Yeah, that's a lot of hours during cemeteries.
Yeah.
And I realize that, but again, that's why I like, I would like select board's opinion.
Even if it's.
Or we can have that when we do the budget discussion at our next session. Just to kind of put a bug in everybody's ear.
I'm not sure how you cut them. Cemetery, the lawn mowing, the cemeteries eat so much of that.
Yeah, cause you don't want.
I have ideas.
I'm glad.
She's gonna mow. I have ideas.
You and Hannah are gonna, you and Hannah are gonna mow in your spare time? Is that what you're gonna do?
I already got the go-kart started too.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna get a bunch of sheep, turn them wounds. As long as somebody waters them, I'm okay with that, all right? As long as somebody makes sure they have water, I'm good with that.
That's a good idea.
Um, I, I think one thing, Brian, on, on your trail stuff is, I'd like to reach out to you. I'd like to try to reach out to Williams College and see what they have available for their, I don't know if it's their outing club or their, I know they have some different groups down there that do trail work and trail design and trail maintenance.
Okay.
And I know that because when I was working with Donald Campbell on the, um, on the land acquisition, he brought it up.
Okay.
Okay, I don't, I don't, you might be wanting to reach out to Donald. I don't know who the contact or, or what even what department it is. But I know they do have some, um, trail stuff down there.
I don't know if the high school still has programs that would do that.
Yeah, I don't know.
I know the tree careful landscape management used to do that.
Yeah, I'm not sure what their programs entail now since they've restarted since COVID. I know a lot of programs got trimmed back.
But I think, I think the college would be, would be somewhere to start on your trail thing.
Okay.
Just throwing that out there.
No, I appreciate that.
Okay, we done the budget, we good there? Ballot article initial discussion.
So, speaking of cemeteries, since we have so many, I want to take care of them. I think we need to have a ballot article that addresses um possibly setting up a cemetery fund or repurposing the Pownell Housing Rehabilitation revolving loan fund to the cemetery fund, so that we have money to budget into that fund yearly to provide perpetual care, long-term care, the, the cemeteries are. There's no one to take care of them and we, without money, we cannot take care of.
You're talking maintenance upkeep, you're, are you also talking record keeping as far as?
All of it.
Cemetery deed plots and all that?
Yep.
Okay, cause I know you had, you had previously mentioned.
So we had the mappers come out. They're still working on mapping.
Okay.
Um, that's taking a long time, but it, our records are not that good.
I know you had mentioned about maybe encouraging the public to, if you have any deeds to cemetery plots,
Yep.
to like come forward and provide them.
Yeah, but those, right, they're mostly recorded, hopefully, but again.
I, I've, I've known a few families that have had issues where they went to go get a plot and, you know, somebody was already occupying it.
And I've stopped.
Not all of us are that lucky.
I won't sell them anymore because that's what's gonna happen. We're gonna double sell plots.
Right, no, I've had a few people approach me and I've just, if you got a copy of your deed, contact Tara at the town hall and provide a copy.
And so the cemetery of the Indian massacre is still run by Cindy Brownell. That one is, still has plots available. So I've been referring people to her, but um, yeah, Oak Hill is, I'm still waiting for the mapping to see if there's any places.
So I didn't plan this, but I had been planning to bring it up during budget. There's a, would the town be open to possibly buying another piece of property or acquiring additional piece of property for cemetery use? Because I, there's a great piece of property on North Pownell Road, church's property, up on the hill, just past the farm, headed, headed down, that I think would be a lovely cemetery.
I think churches.
But I don't know like if there's any restrictions or easements or anything on it.
That's the thing is we are gonna need more land eventually for cemeteries. And if we have no money or anything to really, um, we need policies in place. We need, we, we really.
If we're gonna be in the cemetery business, we need to be set up for.
Yes, and I cannot, I reached out to the LCT. No other board can handle it, only this.
Cemetery, that cemetery.
Or a cemetery commission. You can't, so you can't have like planning commission. Cause I was hoping maybe we could piggyback with a different board. We can't. It has to either be you guys or a cemetery.
I think it's time, I think, I think a ballot article, I think a ballot article is a great idea. I think it's time that, um, let the citizens decide.
Yep.
We have, I, yeah.
But let the, let the residents and taxpayers of the town pound decide what they wanna do with that. Um, and, and then we can move forward with that. And, and I think a ballot article, and I think it's gonna take, um, I don't know how you write it, but you have some ideas.
Yeah, I'll be.
If you need, if you need some help with that, if you, if you need to bounce off some ideas, I would be more than happy to be that bounce person.
Okay.
Okay, and, and work with you. I'm not gonna do it.
Yes.
This is your, this is yours.
Yeah, no, I can.
It's your ideas and you have them. I, I, but I, I am more than happy to work with you on this. Cause I, um, cemeteries are something that have always been, um, something that's kind of strikes me pretty deep that we need to take care of them and.
And do, and it's.
For whatever reason, yeah. It's always.
I agree with you on that.
That's great.
Well, I think a lot of it is. The young people just don't get it.
It's, to me, it's a respect thing for the elders of the.
Yep.
Yep, yep, you know, that, that just because somebody's buried under that headstone, we're still respecting to make sure that we take care of it.
Right, right, and right now the mower does a great job, but you know, there's stones lying down or there might be trees that are too big for a mower or, you know, there's a lot of logistics that go into managing a cemetery.
Mm-hmm.
Bennington has a specific cemetery.
But just maintaining the roadways through them.
Right. So the other ballot article idea I have is for Tom, and I talked to him about it. Um, he has currently a building fund. And you all know, he really wants to pave behind his, uh, is it called the tipping shed or whatever it's called? Um, so Ellen and I talked about it. If we repurpose that fund and just sort of rename it, um, make his building fund a capital project fund instead, he could pave with it or use it for the building. Um, so it's the same money will still be in it, we'll still be budgeting more money into it, but instead of calling it a building fund, it'll be a capital projects fund for the transfer station.
Capital project or building.
And he liked, he liked that idea, so.
I'm in total agreement with that.
One hundred percent.
That's just a ballot article, does it?
Yeah, just.
You have to rename the fund from, and the taxpayers have to do that. We can't do that.
Yes.
That's correct. Okay.
Yep.
I'm good with that.
So those are the only two that I have that I'm thinking, but if you guys have ideas, I certainly don't think we should try to make our treasurer or town clerk appointed instead of elected because it's not gonna pass, most likely. Um.
I think.
Think there's many other things that we need to address.
I don't think so. I think we're, I think we're in good shape. Um, I, I think we've addressed a couple of things. I think the cemetery is a big one to address now. Um, I think that, that changing that name is totally, makes total sense to me. Um, but other than that, I think the town is in pretty good shape right now. I think we've, yeah, I think we're in pretty good shape. I don't think we need a lot of ballot articles from the select board this year.
I don't believe we have any surprises on the horizon anyways that I know.
No, I don't think so.
I mean, talking to different people, so.
No, I think we're, I think we're in pretty good shape. We got, we gotta finish our land acquisition project and we're, got the right steps made for that now and, and, um, we're, I think we're, I think we're good. Unless somebody comes up with something, then we can always add that in, that's fine.
And I'll bring the language back for the ones that I suggested on the twenty-eighth.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Hannah, any public comment?
I have to go get my computer so I have numbers.
Awesome.
I would like to just say that I wanted to thank everybody for coming for the tree lighting. We had a phenomenal turnout and it was really nice to see everybody out and about. And the tree dedication to Mr. Singleton was wonderful. I just wanna thank everybody for participating.
It was a great time.
Cause there was a lot of people.
I only had an issue with the lady who was being stingy on hot chocolate.
I was trying to make it last.
It was, um.
It was a really nice turnout.
Yeah, it was incredible.
It was great. Thank you to everybody that lent a hand and helped out.
It was incredible and for everyone who came. Um, it was, it was, it was kind of refreshing to see that many people, um, here. I, I know that part of it was probably, or I'm sure a part of it was because of Mr. Singleton and, and what he meant to the school and all of us who, you know, he touched in one way or the other, whether he was our teacher or just whatever. Um, but I also think that things are turning around. I know, I, I, I do have one public comment thing. I know the PTG has a, has the, um,
Polix.
Pownell Express again this year, um, this Saturday night from four, forty-five, I think until seven. Um, I know they put a lot of time and effort into this again this year. Um, I know certain bus drivers are gonna be dressed up and whatever, so. Uh, I know Michelle Weber has added this up and it's, um, well, she's got a lot of tickets sold. But there again, that's a, that's a really good thing. I think our community is kind of sliding in a positive way now instead of where we've been for, you know, at one point a few years ago. So. And that's, you know, that's nothing doing the select board, that's the school and the PTG and stuff that's in that, you know. Historical society was an integral part of the lighting and the tree lighting and, and the parks and rec and, you know. So I think that was, I think that was really good. So. Uh, executive for personnel.
Make a motion when you enter into executive session for personnel.
Second.
Peter's about to die.
I wondered, I wondered how we lost our computer operator. I have a motion on the floor and second to enter into executive for personnel. All was in favor?
Aye.
Recording in progress.
Um, I'll entertain a motion to command of executive.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All was in favor?
Aye.
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 Um, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All was in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for attending and don't forget the, uh, Pownell Express on Saturday at the elementary school and the Grinch will be there. Trust me.